Being six o'clock, I'll open the meeting of the and field select board. Jack is here via Zoom. And I see David Buphay is on as well. Jack, I understand that you would like to, you want to do the approval the minutes after you give your report and go over the warrant.
You have to unmute.
Still muted.
You're muted.
Okay. We're not hearing you, Jack.
You're not unmuted yet.
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
There we are. Okay. I had a little technical difficulty. Yeah, if you don't mind, just, just because I did, do have a conflict tonight, I'm happy to spend this.
With the Jack stuff first, you want to start with your town manager, manager report?
Sure. The last time we met, you asked us to do up some signs. You kind of approved those signs. We've made them up, laminated them, and the two chiefs have distributed them to most locations in town that, that we're open to them. There, we're going to produce a few more because they did run out, but in large measure, we've accomplished that mission with the help of the police chief and the fire chief. I'll just remind you and everybody that we have scheduled two information sessions for the public to get a sense of, for you all to get a sense of the community's interest in doing any renovation or expansion of the Whitney Hall facility, town office and library. Those sessions are January 24th, Monday night, seven o'clock, and then January 27th, repeat also at seven o'clock. And again, the whole, the point of that, as you remember, is to begin to get some feedback from the community about the concept of making renovations and expansions to Whitney Hall, as well as the concept of, of looking at a public safety building sometime in the future. And again, there's no timeline for that because no location for it. And, but the idea of the public information session is really to get a sense from the public of their interest in a bond in order to do something with Whitney Hall, whether it's the iteration that is represented in the brochure or something totally different. But the idea is to get a sense of whether there's enough support in town to continue with a warrant article that would allow the town to move forward with actual design plans for Whitney Hall. So those brochures, as you saw and probably received, have gone out and we've begun to get a little bit of feedback. So that, that'll, that'll be something that I look forward to seeing all of you at, the three of you, as well as the three library trustees. I will be in attendance for those. I have offered to moderate those meetings in order to kind of just shape them up a little bit. Obviously, you'll have a new town manager then, but I will come back and facilitate those meetings and, and, and work to bring him up to speed.
Jack, excuse me, but isn't it going to be a two-step process so that repairs, if, if the big project is turned down, Whitney Hall is desperately in need of basic repairs?
Yes. Yeah, there'll, there'll be, there'll be an alternate warrant article, which I believe is in your packet. So that if you don't move forward with a bigger bond authorization, an alternate warrant article would allocate $150,000 for repairs. And I certainly hope that the town agrees to do one of those. I mean, the, the roof is leaking, some of the windows are rotting, the pigeons are coming in and, and obviously it's been a difficult time to find contractors. But I certainly hope that either you do the bond for the big project or the $150,000 for repairs at a minimum. So yes, those will be alternative warrant articles presuming that there's enough citizen support to actually have it as a warrant article. And I guess we'll, we'll have a sense of that after the two meetings and then between the Board of Selectmen and the trustees, you all can make some sort of decision about moving forward. So in the draft warrant articles before you today, you'll see some language that begins to talk about both of those options. And as you know, you'll take these under consideration tonight, but ultimately on February 1st, you'll be meeting to actually finalize the warrant articles because there obviously is a timeline associated with that. And also just for, just for reminder purposes, the next day, on February 2nd, you'll be holding the public hearing on the 2022 proposed budget. So you will have two meetings on the first and, and another meeting on the second. So I just want to be sure that, that that's teed up for you and everybody else. I have, so if there's no more questions on that for the moment, I'll, I'll just keep on moving. I have started some outreach to the new county, new town manager to get him up to speed on the schedule for the next month and the sort of meetings that he should be planning for. And again, obviously I'll be working with him through a transition so that he can come up to speed pretty quickly. There is a new regulation or statute related to towns having boards of health. As you know, Liam is your health officer. And, but there's a new statute that requires the towns actually have a board of health. And I'd like to bestow that honor on you today and presume that the Board of Selectmen will also be and become the Board of Health in order for regulatory purposes to comply with the statute. And that also gives Liam a, a vehicle to both deliver information to you about conditions in the town and for him to receive support from you in order to carry out his task. It is a slight change, but there is a change in state law.
Do you need to report on that, Jack?
I suppose, I suppose it wouldn't hurt. I don't, I don't know how you could avoid it from a statutory point of view anyway, but if you want to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen will be, also act as the Board of Health, I would accept that motion.
Can we see a copy of the R S A to know if we're signing other four? I mean, I, I also all of my health stuff to other people because
Yeah.
I just, if it was something that's like general oversight by, but if it requires any kind of
Yeah.
expertise, I don't feel comfortable. I'm not a health professional.
Well, you, you're going to take your, you're going to take your lead from your health officer. So you, you won't get in trouble. I, I was looking back at my notes. I don't have the statutory reference right now. But the other thing we can do, since it's not an urgent matter, we can get a little more detail and you can table that for the moment and we'll just put it under old business and we'll circle back on it later.
That's true. I would like that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's fine. You can do that.
David Buphay has a question. David?
He looks muted. Maybe his hand came down.
No, I, I took it down because we were following on.
Okay.
Okay. We'll come back.
Okay. And finally, just so you know, as of the end of the year, the taxes collected from the bills that were sent out were at 89%, which is a very good number. So, so far, no one has had a tremendous amount of difficulty paying their property taxes this year. And subject to any questions or anything I forgot, Alisa, that would conclude my comments for the moment.
Okay, David Buphay has his hand up and I think Alisa has unmuted now. I've asked him that.
There he is. David?
David?
I spent eight hours on some.
Does, does, does he know that he's got his hand up, do you think?
David, your hand is up. Do you have an, something you want to say?
I think it sounds like a problem trying to figure it out.
Okay, we're, we're going to move on with the next item because Jack has to leave and we need to review the town warrant. So we'll catch you later.
So did you want to go over the warrant in more detail because there are a few things to discuss about the warrant?
Yeah, we should.
Last year, you, the second session was May 1st. I don't know what you want to do this year. If you want it to go over in March, you don't want it over to May, want it indoors, you want it outdoors. So that's a decision that will have to be made before the warrant is finalized.
Okay.
February. It doesn't have to be done right now.
But I see Lindsay is here. What is Lindsay's recommendation at this point?
Um, that's exactly why I was here. I was not to make a recommendation, but was to remind everyone that we need to make a decision. Hopefully you all can hear me. And I, I was hoping that the new town manager would be around as well, but I, I guess not. I'm not sure when he starts, but that, that's a decision we need to make collectively on whether or not to hold town, the, the deliberative or the, you know, the, the business session. So that the ballot session, I think we can keep on the, the regular voting Tuesday. But it, I, I wanted to see about, from the select board, how they were feeling on holding the business session the following Saturday. We have moved it in the past. Last year we moved it to May. It was not warm, but it's okay. And then, and obviously the previous year we held it in July. I know that this causes some budgetary issues as the budget doesn't get passed until five months or so into the fiscal year. And that can be problematic. So I, I kind of wanted to see where you all were at. That's it. That's all I have to say at the moment.
Good chance we're going to want to have it outdoors.
We probably don't want to do March.
Yeah.
Right.
In the neighborhood, maybe. When do we need to decide by? Because, you know, the COVID ton masks are kind of helpful. I know we just took a spike. We're in an ever so slight downturn, but I'm not promising anything because of it. So it'd be interesting to see where we might go. And I mean, at this point, everybody's had a chance to be vaccinated. Who is eligible to vote? I don't want to take children out because it's not. But, and I think we understand what makes people say maskings that works. My bigger concern is I think the elementary school gym is still half full of things. And so it's the venue or anything.
Yeah, and that, that's actually the other point I, I meant to make. Sorry. Thank you, Kate, is that, you know, we typically hold the business session in the elementary school. It is the, the, the duty of the select board to find the location. And I'm not sure what the elementary school is like, what their thought is. And if we do keep the business session, so legally, we should at least alert the public to a postponement two weeks ahead of time. If, in, for this particular state, this is not a, a like overnight state of emergency. So I would, I would definitely want to give ourselves at least two weeks beforehand. So we have a little bit of time before we make that decision. However, there is the matter of renting all of the sound equipment and what kind of notice do they need? As well as checking in with the school board and, and, and seeing what their, you know, the availability of the, of the gym is.
Typically, I would be already scheduling the sound equipment for March. So whether they have the day available for postponing March, ideally knowing where it's going to be while we have the warrant finalized on February 1st, which is kind of have to have it done. You know, two tweaks on the second, but the first is ideal. If you know quite then what you're thinking about.
That, that would be soon enough?
That would be soon enough, February 1st. So you have time to think about it. We can watch what COVID is doing. Okay.
I, I would say that we should make that a drop dead deadlock.
Right.
No postponing after that.
Thinking about options.
Right.
Put out what, what we can possibly do.
Yeah.
Do you want me, I can just zap a line to Harrison and ask him what the status of the gym is because he knows it's still going to be full of stuff.
I, I don't, do we even want to think about the gym?
I, I don't. I'm just.
I'm, I'm totally against that. You know, having it indoors with this new variant, which is very, very tricky.
So if you're definitely looking towards outdoors, then we just need to figure out what, how cold are you willing to, for it to be?
We're from New England.
Yeah.
I'm going to wear foot warmers.
I'm less and less from New England.
I bought a box of foot warmers after last year's episode. We'll share.
You do have time to think about it.
I think if we are largely inclined to do tents, make your tent rentals because people are catching up on weddings in the last two years, we're going to be hard pressed to get a tent if we don't have it booked enough.
So yes, the sooner the better.
Do you want to inquire and see if there are any difficulties? Because we might be smart to take a ton of the date, see what you can get for a tent.
Yeah, good idea.
Because last year it was a popular tent.
So it was on May 1st before, or the 30th of April is the closest to that date on the Saturday, or you can go to day seven.
When you're getting up next to Mother's Day, if that makes any difference.
Yeah, that's my daughter's birthday party, but I.
That should be pretty warm.
Yeah.
Fondalaw.
It won't slow.
John, why are you jinxing us?
We'll go to Tuesday and we'll get it. We can't want that for everybody.
The, the biggest part was that it was, it was cold and raining and under the tents was very damp. And so I know my, my feet were iceboxes by the end, but we made it through, you know, the, the May date. So it's, it was, it just happened to be, you know, but it was 75 three weeks before that. So you just, we don't know. So, and you don't have to make a decision tonight, but we definitely need to think about it.
We want to target that date though, so that at least that's something to work with.
I, I think let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so did you want to finish with the warrant then?
Yes.
So.
Oh, the, the planning board just loaded it up here.
They did. And I did re, I did do some editorial changes to that, just, well, not editorial, I should say, formatting changes. Because in some cases he said, strike this, but then we did this editing. So not everything is, is done that way, but we'll, we'll see. I think that cleaned up a little bit. So if we jump to Article Six, that's the one for Whitney Hall, library, town office. Yes. I'm not sure if that's the actual number because Jack indicated that perhaps that was the construction number and didn't include the design. So that remains to be seen. And then, of course, it's up to the Board of Selectmen if you want to have the principal and interest payments come from the C I P, come from the reserve fund. Or if you want to just pay for it out of taxes each year. So that will have to be decided. Because the informational meeting is not going to happen until after the next meeting, which is going to have to schedule a couple hearing. And if you choose not to put it on the warrant, we'll just cancel it here. So we'll do that for February 1st.
And Alisa, the Heritage Commission anticipates putting up petition warrant articles. So which we have in a meeting for on Thursday.
Yeah. So I don't have everything, but these are not necessarily the order that they'll be in. You have to have any bonds or notes of $100,000 first.
Okay.
Then the Selectmen can choose the order, but the next to last article, I did put a placeholder for that, just so we don't forget.
Okay.
Then following Article Six, we have $150,000 for Whitney Hall repairs, you know, basically rotting siding, any rotting window trim, roof repairs, things that really have to be done to keep the building, you know, the, the envelope sealed up. You can continue to have that kind of an article, even if you choose not to put the building in. Or you can, at the budget hearing, if you're sure at that point, have the option of, for having the budget, talking to the budget committee about increasing the budget for those expenses. Or you can have an alternate budget if they don't want to, if you just want to have it as an alternate budget. There are different ways to know on that. The next one, this has an either or article. So the Oak Hill Road Bridge expenses came in, the, the quotes came in much higher than anticipated. We have $150,000 already authorized for borrowing and we're expecting it's going to cost us $200,000. So we need another $130,000. So you can either borrow that and add it to the other borrowing that's already approved. Or as an alternative, if you want to use undesigned funds to pay for that additional amount and only borrow the $150,000 that was already authorized, that's an option as well. I gave you some information on the undesigned fund. Our goal for 12% is $2,017,163. At the end of 2020, we were at 1.6 million and we expect that to be going up again. I'm not sure exactly how much at this point. A very rough calculation is about $100,000. Because we've had so many people out, we saved a lot on health insurance and retirement, things like that. So we would actually recommend that you use the undesigned fund and that way you don't have to raise taxes.
Right.
Now, the next one is for $120,000 for a roadside loan unit. As the gentleman who used to be this for the town, so this business, we don't we don't have any roadside loan. They're hard to come by. So in order to purchase the equipment, we'd either finance that or take that out of the undesigned fund as well. Then the budget article is the next one. Obviously, that number is still forward right now. After that, we have the $500,760 to go into the C I P, come from reserve fund. That's basically taking last year's appropriation minus the extra $45,000 we got into the undesigned fund and then adding the $26,200 to there. The next one is the employee retire, retiree benefits trust fund. And I don't have a current balance at the end of 2020 or the beginning of 2021, we have $41,000 in there. But we've had a number of expenses, $28,000 of expenses already. We have Sandy's retirement package has not come out of it yet. So we're still recommending the $30,000 to land. While we still have it from the undesigned fund like we did before, that's. Then we have the Echo Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan that the Energy Committee has helped carry on. That's, they're working on an updated draft to that based on the input they got at the first hearing, like another one in February. So the plan may change, but it still will be article. Then we have the Historic District Designation, which the Heritage Commission will be working on on Thursday. And that is it. Not a lot this year. So in order to, because the budget committee is meeting on the 13th, if you have an idea of how you want to go, there's two articles, one for the Oak Hill Road Bridge and the roadside loan unit. You're inclined to go with using the undesigned fund for those.
I'd be inclined to do that.
I, I think that takes a lot of time.
I do also.
So we will make sure that the budget committee is aware that that's the direction we're in. That's it for the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
And David Buphay is going to stand up to help here too.
David, are you ready?
Yeah, I finally got the technical issues done. If you can hear me?
Yeah, just fine.
Okay, good. Just a question, point of issue for people to think about. Regardless of which side of the issues about the facilities, the Whitney Hall and the public safety facility, people are at, I think it is very important to involve as wide a group of citizens in that discussion and information. The, you know, bouncing back to, to John's view about the town meeting inside, I, I think that it really should be, have, have, have a Zoom option. So that, and I realized there, there may be some technical issues there at the community building, but we've got two or three weeks to solve those. So I would certainly make that recommendation to, to this group.
Okay, thank you. Jack, do you have anything else before you leave?
Uh, no. No, if you're good, I'm good.
We're good. We'll just get back to the regular agenda then. The first thing.
All right. Thank you for accommodating me tonight.
Approval of the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve as
December 20th.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Minutes are approved. Board reports.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Kate, I think the only thing I have that knew is that with my little L pad on with Eva, the hometown holidays, all of the different groups that did it around town, who Eva kind of collaborated and organized with to get the word out, seemed to do a really awesome job. So.
Yeah, really revived it, I think.
Yep. Yeah, and made it a whole entire event that was very inclusive and energetic. I think, you know, the coloring contest, it was very creative too, right? You could see the coloring contest in, for example. The elementary school was given gingerbread houses that they were rebuilt. They were donated by Eva and then taken to the museum. So the kinds of contributions were really, you know, special. And I think it's a great model for doing some other events in town. So I just wanted to stop and thank everybody who contributed. Good, had a great event at the Lakeside Park. And I think there's a lot of other options and hopefully more, more options in the coming years when we maybe are.
Well, let's think about 4th of July as another possibility.
Eva, yeah.
About that at one point, but to have different organizations maybe do something on that board.
Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity to do some marketing. And I talked to Rob Taylor a little bit with, just thinking about the business aspect of it, how we involve businesses. When we did ugly sweater, from economic development side, we asked businesses to provide a special. And so I think there's a lot of great ways to involve all kinds of organizations, not just, you know, the people who are going to come to the event. So I reminded them about Smitri, that talked a little about Powell, because that used to be.
And so that was very popular.
Exactly. So I think there are some things, if you do that, it would have to obviously be a different format this year, but may not happen this year, but just getting those back on the docket. So if anybody has ideas or favorites that are kind of coming on, that might be good to revive or, you know, change a little bit, I think send them along to Dawn, who's helping head up the event committee.
The very first, the early days of hometown holidays, it was designed, I guess, as a stimulus for local merchants. And it was a card or a ticket that you carried around and if you went, remember the, the barely usable place and shape of valley auto, they would punch your card and then you'd get some kind of a prize. And Barbara Brady was running it. So it's nice to see it coming back strong.
Yeah, and I think. Yeah, and I think small business Saturday kind of took that.
Yeah.
At one point, and then that petered off. And maybe if we ever get out of this COVID slouch, we can do a little bit more, but definitely exciting. So if anybody has ideas or things they love, either send them to me and I'll pass them on to Don or send them along to Donna for the Wood Association.
Okay, uh, let's see, Lakeside Park, so we're going to be approving some funding of, so I won't get into that. We're meeting tomorrow. The Heritage Commission met. Their December meeting was a washout because people. Various people were traveling, it it didn't work, so we didn't have a forum. We have an emergency meeting planned this week to move forward with the petition warrant article for the Enfield Center. Historic Triangle, and that would be making the Enfield Center Schoolhouse, the Union Church, and the. Townhouse our local historic district. The reason we were pushing for this is in order to become a certified local government town. Bristol is Lebanon is. Certified local government opens up a lot of grant opportunities, especially for planning. And since we're in this planning phase right now, when it looks like it's going to be for a while, it would be nice to have. The additional funding that certified local government might provide. But the first step is to get this local historic district in place. So that's what we're going to be cobbling together on Thursday.
So are you talking the petition article?
Yes.
You're going to see if the, well, you don't need a petition if the board here is on hold, the support of the capacity is historical.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you can just volunteer and put it on.
Okay.
What if I send the information to Elisa and she can discern it so we could read and get feedback? Yes, that way you have a sense without us causing a non-meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you blind copy everybody, then nobody is to move to.
Okay, okay. It will require certain, the National Register District, it's very confusing. National Register District is the biggie, and that requires no stipulations whatsoever. And it gets a bad rap because of places like Manthucket, oh, if you do that, you're going to be told, tell me how to pay my house. With a local historic district, they you. People that put it, create the local historic district, also create the rules and regulations. Linda Jones has done a lot of. Research on this and has other towns, and they can be pretty. Light, shall we say. And that's what we would be going for. Obviously, we want to preserve these three buildings. The reason we selected these three, they're all iconic buildings. The Enfield Center Schoolhouse is the believed to be the last remaining two-story schoolhouse in New Hampshire. But they don't require the permission of the owner. The Union Church, of course, is all for it. John Carr with the Historical Society is all for it, and the town, I would assume, would approve this to. Have the the center townhouse also as part of the. So I will send you the information, Elisa. Why don't I wait until after we meet on Thursday? Because I, if Linda has any more input, she's been working on this. I'd like to hear it before I put it all down. Okay, we've done the draft warrant, oh, Old Home Day of committee resignations.
I will, we accept both resignations for the grant.
I second that.
Hi.
The, I don't see them. Oh, yeah, here it is. Mask on Lakeside Park Fund acceptance of a grant in the amount of five thousand dollars.
I know that we accept the grant in the amount of five thousand dollars, so thanks.
Oh, second that.
Okay, all in favor? And the second one is the Enfield Center Townhouse acceptance of a donation in the amount of a thousand dollars. Elisa, I want to make sure that goes into the trust fund we established for the town. Okay.
I make a motion, we accept the donation in the amount of a thousand dollars to go into the previously established trust fund.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? The administrative items, a municipal registration agent appointment recommendations.
Right, so the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety, they actually do the appointments. So you're simply recommending the appointment of Wendy Huntley, so she can do the state registration.
Okay.
I make a motion that we recommend Wendy Huntley be appointed as the municipal registration agent for the town of New Hampshire.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Need a signature on that one tonight?
Public comments, I see we still have David Buffay, Shirley Green, and Bridget LeBrie on. Uh, this, anyone have anything, any issue or comment that they'd like to put forward? Silence.
I was going to bring up masks, but my concern has been resolved. The signs are right as well.
Are we going to talk a little or not?
You can not just mention that to the undesigned fund.
Okay. No, I got my questions answered already, but I just, I called Elisa to make sure I was reading it correctly. I make a motion to adjourn.
Or I'll second that.
Oh, yeah. I'll go whoop-de-doo.
Bye.
Bye.